Okay, I call the meeting back to order at 6:31 PM. We're meeting an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation. In terms of attendance, Scott Buckley, the chair, is here. Janine Embriano is here. Mr. Rich McGowan is here, and Chris Papa Vassilio is here as well. Diane Aboutwell unfortunately could not make it. We have our superintendent and assistant superintendent on as well. For beginning, I have to start with reading the message we've been reading pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 16, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The North Reading School Committee is being deducted, including remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public is adequately accessed the proceedings decided for in the order. Reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so. Okay. The first order of business is public input. If there's any discussion or anybody that would like to be heard on something that is not on the agenda, and I know we are talking mainly about the reopening, I see some people that I know had asked some questions about spectators at athletics, and we will address that in there. If there's anything outside of that, please put a note in. In terms of student report, I did see Shivie on here, but Shivie, are you giving the student report tonight?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Floor is yours.
Awesome. So can I give everybody a little rundown on how school is going so far and also the student body elections this Wednesday? For the senior class, we have Caroline Hooty running for vice president unopposed. We have Nessra Nordea running for president unopposed. We have Nick Pasquale running for secretary unopposed, and we have Jaclyn Ramo running for treasurer unopposed. For junior year, we have Luke Benneke running for president unopposed. We have Jared McDonald and Jack Carroll both running for vice president. We have Megan Slattery running for secretary unopposed, and we have Adam Bacher running for treasurer unopposed. For the sophomore class, we have Briann Slattery running for president unopposed. Annie Cooperstein running for VP unopposed. We have Jenna Donapoli running for treasurer unopposed, and Shane Hanson running for secretary unopposed. And for the freshman class, we have Cassandra Fitz, Kristen Galvin, and Marty Pierce running for president. We have Abby Lilly running for vice president unopposed. We have Bella Fisher running for secretary unopposed, and Sophie Donovan running for treasurer unopposed. Sultana Saparlis and Gianna Nalivo from the junior class are both running for student representative to the school committee as well. And otherwise, school has been going very well so far, and it seems that all of the students have really adapted to the schedule and the rotation for all the days so far. From my peers, I've heard that a lot of people really enjoy the late start model as well as the half-hybrid and half-in-person model. That's all I've got for today.
Comments or questions? Rich or Chris?
Nothing for me, thanks. I like mine.
Shivie, why didn't you run for one of the class honors?
I'm not sure. I've always preferred to be kind of like the representative to the school committee, so I was keeping that position.
The power.
Great answer. Thank you very much, Shivie.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the school reopening. I turn it over to Dr. Daly to give us a rundown of how things are going.
All right, so I think I'll start with what happened over the weekend with our response to a positive case at the Hooded School. We were aware of a staff member that was in close contact on Thursday. That person then didn't come to school on Friday. We did notify the public health nurse, and our nurses work closely, and you know, I just want to make sure that it's clear to everyone how many people are involved in all these decisions and how closely we work. I'm meeting with the town administrator, the public health nurse, the director of public health, the police chief, the fire chief. We're all meeting regularly on this topic, and so certainly when something like this comes up, we're in communication. I'm also connecting with Mr. Buckley on this, and the principals, obviously, of the school, Mr. McKay, Dr. McKay in this case, he did a fantastic job. And our nurses also, again, all weekend being responsive. So what happens when someone tests positive, which is what happens, so this staff member who was a close contact tested positive, we then begin our contact tracing process where we identify all the staff and students that the person came in contact with, and also all of the places where that person may have been to make sure those places are clean and sanitized. Those close contacts, again, a close contact is someone who is within six feet of the person for a period of between 10 to 15 minutes, and that's what's assessed. In this case, those students and staff members were all identified, and those students and staff are in a quarantine period of 14 days from the particular date that has been established based on the particulars of the staff members' situation. And so those folks all received a call, received information. We made the decision on Saturday to, it was late in the afternoon when we received this. We wanted to let people know that this was out there. We thought because it was the first case, it was also a good idea to let people know, you know, we're on top of this, here's our process, and really to get ahead of any discussion or rumors that might be out there. There was already some misinformation out there about which school this was and what had happened, and so I thought it was a good idea to do that. Mr. Buckley encouraged me to also make sure we communicated to the whole community, which I think was positive. You know, as I mentioned head-on, the difficult decision that I had that night was, you know, do I say, do I tell everyone, and then people are not sure who the people are? You know, I would much rather have been able to say that it's been identified and the close contacts have already been contacted, however, that hadn't happened yet, and I wanted everyone to be aware. And, you know, the example I keep using, I didn't want someone to, you know, go visit their grandmother and then find out the next day that, by the way, they are now in close contact. So we figured rather be safe and get out ahead of this and really bring this information. So over the next 24 hours, all the close contacts were contacted, everything was settled. The building was cleaned, students were able to return to school. There was really very little, from everything that I heard today, very little disruption to our typical day. Students that are in the classroom were able to continue in the classroom. In one of the situations, just this is an example that we've received, the teacher may be out in a quarantine, half of the cohort may be out in the quarantine, the other half of the cohort can come into the school, and the teacher, if she chooses to, can teach from home. And that is what's happening, and that has happened in other situations. The teacher's teaching from home, the half the kids are home, and the other half are going to be in the classroom. So that is the situation that we will likely see as a result of this situation, but we would be prepared for that in others. So in a lot of ways, the way we've designed our system here, the students really aren't missing a beat. It's just where they're learning, it's just a little bit different. The teacher might be home as opposed to in the classroom, the students might be home or in the classroom, but the learning continues. So I figured that was a good update for the first one. I don't know if there's any questions about this situation from the committee.
In the chat, there was a question on siblings quarantined. I mean, I think you identified it was a staff member, so there were siblings there, but do you mean siblings of people that were in the class?
So siblings are not quarantined until, you know, so if, let's say, a second grader is in a quarantine because they're in close contact, the siblings of that student are not quarantined until that student is positive. And so those are the Department of Health protocols. You don't, you know, we don't start, you do not quarantine close contacts of close contacts, you only quarantine close contacts of people who are positive. So if someone else were to test positive, then a whole other process would kick in. But.
Janine, any questions?
Not really. I mean, I guess it comes from the CDC, right, that says that if the student who was in close contact has to quarantine, but if they have two or three brothers or sisters at home, those two or three brothers or sisters don't have to quarantine.
Correct.
Even though they probably even would get closer to their brother or, you know, whatever. And so if that child that's being quarantined, the student that was the close contact, call him Bob.
Yep.
So if Bob, within the 14 days, ends up testing positive, now you have those two other siblings that have been going to school, so the likelihood of them testing positive would most likely be now.
It is.
I guess that's kind of the question.
Yeah, so parents have the information, the parents can make the decision to have their siblings stay home or the parents themselves, but it is not required under any of the protocols. The amount of time where a person is actually contagious, right, is very limited, and so that the chances of that student in the quarantine, that's already out of an abundance of caution that that student is even actually exposed. Again, remember that all of these students are, you know, masked, socially distanced, six feet apart throughout the day, and we're cleaning all the time. So, you know, there was never a circumstance where these students were that close without masks, without all that equipment. So that is the protocol. In some ways, it does sound like we should be just quarantining three levels out, but if you start doing that, you're not able to really function. It's not a North Reading decision, that's just the protocols, so they were following.
For clarification.
Yep, absolutely. It is something that we thought a lot about, and that's a question, you know, I addressed it with all the principals today, because I imagine that's a question that many parents might have, especially if, you know, if people start to realize that someone is out, and then you realize someone has a brother or sister, but, you know, there is no, that is not the protocols that CDC has.
Rich, any comments or questions on this subject?
Patrick, can you clarify what your thoughts are in terms of communication? It seemed like you were saying that you were over-communicating this time because it's the first time. I guess I would, and you can correct me if I misunderstood that, but I guess I would say that over-communication with the community is always going to be a positive.
Yeah.
So hopefully, that communication pattern will continue if and when we have other cases.
Yeah, I would say it certainly will, yeah. I mean, it's, the first time you do it, you don't really know what the response is going to be. So that's kind of why I raised it that way, but that was, I was just trying to explain some of the decision-making process.
Yep.
We knew going in, though, no matter what, we would let everybody know. Obviously, there's privacy concerns, and there are issues, you know, to armchair quarterback. One thing I would do differently that I've already thought about, and we've already debriefed with the town group, the school group, and we're going to debrief again on this. But one thing that I would do differently is I would be a little more specific. I used, you know, I used a lot of resources that are out there, there's some template language, and I used the phrase, you know, Hood School Community Member, which is very much protects the confidentiality of the person. But I feel I could have said staff member, and that would have alleviated some of the concern because parents of children in Cohort D who are fully remote, the likelihood that their child was exposed to a staff member is much less than even to a student, because they were thinking, well, my student's not in school, but they may have been at dance or softball practice with another student. So I think if I communicated that, so that's something I might do a little bit differently in the future. These are all things we're going to think about. But again, we wanted to get this out, and we use very protective language to, you know, to make sure all involved remain confidential, so.
And in regards to the students who are quarantining, is it certain students from each cohort, or is it all one cohort? And how did you make that determination?
So the public health nurse and the school nurse, everyone that did the contact tracing, determined where the infected, the positive person was, and it had to be a situation where they were with a group within six feet of those students for 15 minutes or more. So it affected, you know, this particular position, it's not a typical classroom position. So this person, I'm being delicate here because I don't want to.
I understand, yep.
But, you know, caseloads, and so there were some smaller group cases involved, there were some other circumstances, and there were some visits to classrooms. And so in some cases, it was determined that, you know, that was just a, it was not, you know, a 15-minute exposure, in other cases it was. And so, you know, they made all those decisions based on that.
You just followed the person's day and made the determination, basically?
Exactly. It's a couple of days that we review, you kind of go back a few days, and then they went through. So, you know, it was very thorough, very thoroughly done by, from the staff.
Chris, any comments or questions?
None at this time.
And I have none either. I appreciate the over-communication, and.
Yeah, that will continue.
Perfect, thank you. Next off topic on COVID.
All right, so I think, you know, I just, what I thought I'd be talking about tonight was the communication around the color coding, and I just want to clarify that for everyone here. When we saw that North Reading went into the yellow, quote-unquote, from the map, I felt it was important at that time to let the community know what it would mean if we were to go into the red, and also what it does not mean. It was helpful that the day after we put that out, the Department of Ed put out some clarifying information that basically backed up what we had shared. But essentially, the, you know, the color-coded map was created to help us define different levels of exposure and positive cases that should help us make decisions, but it's not a one-size-fits-all decision. So what they're saying, and they continue to say, is you need multiple weeks of data before you make a decision. You should not be yo-yoing, is the term they use, back and forth between red and yellow and green, and we're open, we're closed, you know, based on the numbers. In a town the size of North Reading with a population of around 16,500 or so, my understanding from the math that I did, out of 100,000, you're talking a handful of cases that can make this go from green to yellow to red. And so I wanted it to be clear because I figured there are people who, if they heard that North Reading was in the red, would assume that they can't come to school the next day, or it's not safe to come to school the next day because we're now red versus a week ago we were yellow. So the important message here for the community is that when you're in the yellow as opposed to the green, there are more cases that are happening. So we need to be more vigilant, we need to do everything that we're doing and do it more effectively, and be very aware of those rising cases, and it's something serious to take seriously. At the same time, if the town and the Board of Health is able to determine that the root of those cases does not have an impact on the schools, then the schools would be able to continue to be open. So in some of the surrounding districts, North Andover, for example, they were in the red, it was determined that there was, you know, isolated, a lot of those cases at Merrimack College didn't directly impact the schools, the schools were able to stay open. In Middleton, a lot of the cases that put Middleton into the red were contained in the jail. Again, not a direct impact on the schools, and if the schools are open, they would have been able to remain open. And so similarly here, so we just wanted to communicate that out and to clarify questions that may be there. And I think that's important to do because I want people to understand that, you know, in some ways, the school is a very safe place. Everyone here is wearing a mask, socially distanced, and there are folks coming around and cleaning every touch point after you move out of there. I mean, you can't really say that about every restaurant or public place that you're in. So I know that when the students are here, they're in a safe place, and so I think everyone is committed to having students in school as much as possible. So even if we were to have, honestly, from my math, it's, you could have a handful of cases in the whole town that could put us into the red, but if it's determined that the schools can remain open, you know, we've had many discussions with the health folks from the town who would say if they feel the schools are still safe, then we can continue to have school.
So, Ms. Embriano, any questions? Mr. McGowan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Papa Vassilio?
Nope.
Julie Topki has a question. What specific metrics will we be considering beyond the red designation?
The, so, for example, that if something were to happen in the schools, it's a very different situation. If we have two to three cases in the school with a teacher, staff, or students, we would be calling in a rapid response unit, and at that point, there's a direct connection to the school, and so obviously, we'd be making considerable decisions, you know, at the school or district level there. If the cases in the town were somewhat connected to the schools, parents, older siblings, you know, that's a very different kind of decision to make a difference there.
I would also add even like how it spread. I know that a couple of the cases that have happened recently in North Reading, they were not spread in North Reading. There were people that went outside of North Reading, they were in another state, they caught it, they came back and they quarantined.
Yep.
I think a spread within North Reading is also something that's a little bit different than somebody who happens to live here or travels outside the state and then comes back with it. Okay.
So, but certainly, you know, just to say again, we, the metrics that the Board of Health would be using, that's who I'd be checking in with on a, you know, multiple times a day to get that information from them.
And we'll continue to communicate out. And the other thing that I would just mention is if, if the schools are open and you don't feel comfortable, that doesn't mean you have to come. I mean, anybody can decide if they don't feel comfortable for any point in time, any reason, they can decide that they want to work remotely for a week or two weeks. If somebody, if a student or a family feels like, even if we're in the red for a week, if they don't feel comfortable coming to school, I would encourage them to stay home, you know, and just like if somebody doesn't feel well. Like tonight, we have, you know, a member of our board that doesn't feel well, so he's participating remotely right now. And so, again, people, people can make the best decision for their own family, and the school makes the best decision for the overall community as best we can, but ultimately, it's, you know, your call. If you don't feel comfortable, by all means, you can go remote for a week or two if that makes you feel more comfortable.
And just to clarify, because I agree with that, but I did have this discussion with the principals because it has come up. It should be a COVID-related decision, so it should not be, I overslept today, it's much easier for me just to work from home. And that has come up, could be the high school, could be the middle school, no, but it has come up a few times, and the principals are reiterating, it is not a choice that, you know, hey, it feels like a remote day today. No, if you're in the Cohort A, you should be here, if you're in the Cohort B, you should be here. However, if you're concerned for any reason about your health or safety, or the health or safety of others, you can stay home for the short term especially. If it's going to be an extended term, we probably should talk about officially moving into Cohort D because there are people that are trying to transition it. But for the most part, the safety standpoint, what Mr. Buckley said, is absolutely correct.
All right, next topic?
So I think that, you know, I just want to talk a little bit about the, I don't know, Michael, is there anything you wanted to speak to about busing or hybrid? I think we've made a lot of adjustments there, and it seems to be functioning pretty well. Is there anything you want to add about that at this time, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Daly. I would agree. I think we definitely made some adjustments a little over a week ago at the beginning of the second in-school learning days of each cohort in terms of the busing days or start times at some of the bus runs. And I've been checking in with the school principals almost on a daily basis, and it does appear like the bus schedule is running much more smoothly, and the drop-off times are on time. I haven't seen buses arrive late, and the principals have agreed with that. And then even in the afternoon, the buses are arriving much more quickly, and, you know, within seven or eight minutes from the close of the school day, particularly at the middle school, which is the last here as we know, the buses seem to be arriving. So I think, I believe that the adjustments we have made have made the runs run a lot more smoothly. So, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. I think the big topics now are obviously the extracurriculars and the athletics. Extracurriculars have started, athletics have begun. The piece that I wanted to say to the athletics, because I know there's been some discussion around parental participation and spectators, you know, the first and foremost, our goal was to make sure that the students had a season and they were on the field. We had to make sure that both athletes coming from other districts in our district are comfortable. The K-Fan League had agreed that we would start the season, make sure that everyone's safe and protected by not having any spectators for the first two weeks of competition. We have decided that that date would be on Monday, the 12th, Columbus Day, would be the day when we would start to have the competitions with spectators. And it's my understanding that that number is at 50. We are looking into whether the governor's latest order for Phase 3 Part 2 would change that number, and then we're also aware that the local Board of Health might weigh in on whether North Reading, given its, you know, its metrics, is able to fully move into that Phase 3 Part 2. But at this time, we, you know, I met with the town administrator, Mr. Buckley, and Mr. Bracy, the director of public health today, Mr. LaPret, Mr. Johnson. Everyone wants to have parents and spectators at the games. We want to do this in a safe and careful way, and so we have a proposal that we'll be sharing with the others in the league. We would have, our plan would be to have two spectators per player that would be allowed to participate. There would be a form that you would sign, a Google form that you could do on your phone or on your computer. You would enter the name of the player, and then you would enter your names. We would open the bleachers, and we would have designated spaces in the bleachers that are spaced six feet apart with, you know, X's for the seats, and you would need to sit in those different seats and spread out throughout the bleachers, and this would allow folks to attend. But the reason we're collecting the names, not only to keep our numbers at the 50 because that's the maximum, but it would also help with the contact tracing. So that is the plan at this time. As far as, we are also, just to be clear, we are also exploring options for live streaming. The turf field right now does not have a wired internet connection, so that's something that was not a part of the design of the field, and it's something that we are exploring. I have a meeting Wednesday morning. We've had a couple of meetings down there with our cable providers to try to get some hard-wired connections, which would provide not only the ability to livestream, but the ability to have, when our classes are down there, they would have connections to the internet. We would also, you know, town meeting, other events, sporting events, we'd have a Wi-Fi connection down there. There's some other facilities-related concerns that the wired connection would help with. So that is something we are exploring. In the meantime, we do have photographers and videographers at the game that are recording the games and livestreaming through some other methods, but we are looking to have sort of a higher level of livestreaming capabilities. And there have been folks that have gathered at the field on the outside, so I think, you know, if a player needs to have more than two people, there's still, there are other places to gather outside of the stands. And this would apply also separately for the different fields, so there are different events at different fields, and we would have those spectator limits at those places as well. Mr. Buckley?
So, I'll open up to the other committee members first for comments. I had some comments afterwards, but my only quick question is, would it be limited to just home fans as part of that proposal?
So that's something we, you know, that's something that we're trying to decide. We wanted to provide it to both sides, but if it is limited at the 50, that would allow just about two fans per player for most of the teams. But, I'm sorry, you know, most teams are about 15 to 20, right? So you're talking about the home team, right? So if you're going to get into the other team, we have to think about what that looks like. So obviously, I think a lot of towns, when faced with this, are going to favor the home parents first. We would like to provide some equal opportunity to parents of seniors perhaps on the other team or something like that. So again, we're trying to get word on whether that number is solid at 50. Right now, that's where we're holding at, but we are trying to get some clarification on that.
I saw something, I was talking to Scott earlier on the news, that if it was outside, that the number increased to 100.
Sure, so the governor's, the governor's order for the outside, Part 2 Phase, Part 3 Phase 2.
Right.
Said for outdoor gatherings or live events, it increased to 100.
Right.
What's unclear is whether that applies to school and athletic events. It sounds like it does, but when it came out last time, a whole separate order then came out a few days later that clarified what this meant for sports and what it meant for local sports, youth sports, recreational sports. And I've inquired at the Department of Education, and there is no guidance yet, and they're not sure if it's coming. We're looking at MIAA, and we're also, the town administrator and Mr. Bracy are looking for this through the Department of Health to see if there's further clarification. And then on top of that, we also need to know whether our Board of Health is going to allow that to expand, because they're very carefully trying to keep our numbers in the yellow and going the other direction. So anything to increase or to open right now, you know, no matter what the governor says, the local Boards of Health can always be more conservative. So they're still asking us to consider that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McGowan, any comments?
So what sports?
So what sports, um, are, are, are we talking about exactly? I assume, I'll, I'll just ask, what sports exactly are, are, are playing and, and would be open for fans?
Yeah, cross-country golf, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' in, uh, uh, field hockey, and, um, there is football, cheering, and volleyball practices.
Right.
But I, I believe, Michael, is there a sport I'm forgetting?
You're muted.
Michael, you're... I, I don't believe so. I, I think you, I think you captured all, all of them.
And there are some varsity and junior varsity, um, teams as well, but those are, I believe those are the sports.
Would something like golf, uh, would that be, uh, would the, would the golf course have to be consulted on all that?
The, the venue?
Yeah, the venue.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we would work with them on that. Their, their, their whole system for fans is a little bit different, as is, I think cross-country is a little bit different as well.
Right.
You don't really have everyone congregating in one place. It's sort of, you've got smaller groups that are at different stations along the way. Mike, Michael knows a lot about cross-country, uh,
Right.
fans. Is that, is that true, Michael? You don't have everyone in one place, or is it?
That's correct, yeah. So they sort of lend itself for a little bit more social distancing for the spectators. You have a little bit more freedom to kind of spread out, um, during the venue, so. Um, but, but typically, you know, they would be, certainly the, the course in the terms of golf, I think they would put out some of their requirements for spectators and designated locations that are acceptable, that the course lends itself to, and then it's similar to, to cross-country. Whether it's a home meet or an away meet, I think the, the hosting team would, would provide some guidelines that are acceptable areas for spectators to kind of social distance and spread out and still see, you know, areas at the starting line and finish line and so forth.
Yeah. So I guess, I, I guess, I'm totally open to this, and, and I know that the, you know, the, the people in North Reading have, have been great about, you know, in general, about social distancing, and then certainly supportive of our efforts in the school. I'm just concerned about there's cer- certain situations where something might not be entirely in our control, um, uh, where, you know, extra people show up or, or, or don't really understand the, the rules. Um, so I guess, I would just say, you know, we should be thinking along those terms and making sure that, you know, we have a way of controlling in those sort of, uh, away-from-the-field situations.
Yeah, that's a great point. I, Mr. Johnson will, will surely follow up with the venues, as will the coaches, um, and, and to make sure that those, uh, those messages are communicated. Uh, but I think the, the, the numbers of the typical crowds at those events as well is probably well under the 50, so I think that's helpful as well.
Yep.
Uh, so, but I think it's, uh, it's a great point, and we'll follow up, so.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Papasilio?
Um, yeah, kind of on the heels, excuse me, of Rich's point, um, how would we go about monitoring or enforcing, uh, appropriate, uh, social distancing amongst the fans?
Taser.
Sure, yeah. School committee volunteers. Now, we, um, you know, Mr. Johnson is at, at all the varsity games or there's a designation there, there are administrators that are present, um, and folks will be keeping an eye on it. We might have some, some volunteers to help us as well. But there's going to be like so many other things, the, you know, a trust and an honor system as well. When people put their names into the form with the contact tracing, they're also agreeing to, um, to sit socially distanced, to wear masks, and to be, um, you know, to, to follow and maintain all rules. We've actually, uh, purchased some additional signage for all of our, our fields and, and spaces that reinforce all these behaviors. And, you know, I think everyone knows that, like I started by saying, the most important thing is that our students have games and competitions that they're able to play. And I think anyone that would do anything to jeopardize that by not following the rules, it's only going to hurt the students. And that's why we're all here, that's why we're all here to cheer them on at the games, and the last thing we would want is, is that. You know, I think it's important to clarify that part of what I did when I reached out to other superintendents on the question of, um, you know, if we are in the red, are we still able to play? Because it was originally proposed that if a town went into the red, those games had to be canceled or postponed. And I think everyone, all the superintendents are in agreement that it's not necessarily means that those games don't play, but there are some schools that may want to postpone those games. Um, so we need to, as a community, do everything possible to, to keep those numbers down, to keep the kids healthy. And I, I can, I can understand that. I can understand why sending kids into a, a situation, um, where, where the, the numbers are, or the cases are high, is, is, is a risk that, that the school's taking. And so I could understand why they would need to postpone or possibly cancel a game. But we want to try to avoid that, so everything we can do to keep our numbers, uh, trending in the, back in the right direction, um, is going to be very important.
Chris, any other comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
And, and for my comments, I'll just say, I appreciate, you know, the clarity on this. Um, I think, I think everybody has to understand, we have to start with the guidelines. So whatever the governor says, if the governor says 50 or 100, you know, we can't go above that. The local Board of Health as well, and some of this might change. If we go into the red, there might be a change to some of these plans. Um, we have to make sure that, we have to also understand that in the K-PAN League, there's a lot of schools that are not open right now, that are, that are full remote right now. And so we, you know, I think it, there was a lot of planning that was needed amongst the different schools. I think that's a lot of what went into the first two-week, um, moratorium. But I do firmly believe that if we're open, like, we're outside, and I think people can be six feet apart. I think people are responsible. I think, you know, parents should be able to see their kids play. There's also a, you know, there also should be some conformity to other sports leagues. I mean, I watched my son play soccer last weekend at, you know, when I was six feet apart. Only one of us is allowed to go there. I know some people are playing flag football on the same field that we're playing soccer on, and so, you know, there should be some consistency with that. And again, it's a different organization, and so, you know, we have to follow all the guidelines, but I think this is a good plan for the proposal, and I think I encourage the school to talk to the other communities. And once the two-week, uh, period ends, I would love to be able to see a limited number of fans at the field to cheer on their, their kids, so.
So as of right now, that is our plan. We're moving forward with the, the tool that will be shared out. This will be a tool that will, uh, at this moment, we think it's going to be filled out before every game. We just, uh, my thought was that, you know, instead of filling it out in advance for all the games you're going to go to, and then you forget whether you filled it out or not, or, you know, I, I think it makes the most sense to do it as you're going to the game. Um, and then you'll have that information, and we'll have that information, um, about who's attending, so.
Okay. Any other comments? I know there's some parents that have reached out to me. Any other comments or questions? Feel free to type in your name if you would like to talk, or a question if you'd like.
Okay.
I would also just, um, yeah, go ahead. Thorstad?
Hi, this is Barbara Thorstad. Thank you to the committee for your time tonight. Uh, my daughter is a, on the, um, girls' varsity soccer team. Um, it is listed on mass.gov that MIAA bumped it up to 100 people for outdoors. Um, one thing I think is in our favor, um, is that we have a large bleachers similar to Newburyport. I don't think all the K-PAN League is going to be able to accommodate the same amount of fans safely. Um, so I, I don't know the capacity for our bleachers, but that's certainly working in our favor. The other great thing that works in our favor is, once the bleachers have reached the capacity of whatever, um, the Board of Health and others have decided is, is the right number for us, let's say it's 60, and there's overflow, luckily, they can go to the fence on 62, which is pretty awesome. Um, and, um, I won't bore you with it now, but, um, I do have some ideas about the Google Doc scenario, especially with the person who has to work late and doesn't come, and then he sends somebody else who doesn't fill out contact tracing. So, anyway, if you haven't already thought of that, um, that's something we could get to, um, get to at a later point. Um, I wanted to touch on something that happened this week, and that is, um, uh, it was, uh, great that at the boys' varsity first home soccer game, they were able to, um, uh, right on the fly, they, um, were able to ask and get permission to have one photographer and one videographer, um, in, um, in the bleacher area. And, um, when I heard about that, I called Dave Johnson today to say, "Hey, I heard about the great news for the boys' soccer team. Can the girls' soccer team do that?" And, um, he said yes. And, um, then I also asked him if for the away game on Wednesday, he would be willing to, um, call the Athletic Director of Triton and ask if the girls' soccer team could have one photographer and one videographer in their bleacher or sideline area. And again, he said yes. He said yes with the understanding that this doesn't mean it's approval, it just means that he's okay with it, he would make the phone call. And also, we all understand that on the other side, the, um, the other, um, school is certainly, they're prerogative to say, "No, we're not able to accommodate that," and, and that's perfectly fair and fine. What I want to get at today is, what do we need to do to green light that this would be the scenario, not just for boys' soccer and girls' soccer, because we heard about it, but for each of the fall sports? That field hockey, boys' soccer, girls' soccer can get the green light to have one photographer and one videographer in the stands, and that for each of their away games, that at least the inquiry is made from Dave, uh, Johnson to the Athletic Director of the opposing school to say, um, you know, "Can we, can we do this? Is it safe today or tomorrow, whatever the case may be?" And then we would just honor with, you know, no questions asked, whatever they want, and we would do that. Um, but right now, it's ha, it's happening on a just, you know, informal, who heard about it first basis, and it seems like it's something that we would like to make fair and consistent across the fall sports.
Sure. So I, I believe I, I addressed this earlier, that, that is something that's happening at all the games, um, for all the sports. That might have developed today, but that's what Mr. Johnson said, uh, to me.
Well, I don't know what time you talked to him, but it's, it's certainly not happening for girls' soccer.
Yeah, he, he, he has, he's, he's, he gave me information to share tonight, so that, that's the, the message now, is that this is, um, he, I'll read it to you. He, he says, "We are allowing two parents from each school to take pictures and film the games, both home and away for the Cal League this fall. Communication for this is from A.D. to A.D. for each team." So, it, it, that's, that's, that's for all, I'm reading that it's for all teams, for all sports, both home and away.
Oh.
So, so that, that, that's as of about 12:45 today.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's what I shared, um, earlier tonight, and that sounds like a positive step from maybe where we were. So, I think maybe your advocacy helped to get that. And I, you know, I can certainly confirm and follow that up with him, but I'm reading that as, um, it, it's greenlit for everything.
That's what he hoped to have happen, but again,
Yeah.
you know, at the time, it was him and I talking on the phone. We could have proved any number of things. Um, so glad to hear that it's, it got rolled up and that is official. Um...
So, Mrs., Mrs. Thorstad, the one thing that I would add too, I know we were speaking with NORCAN before. They want to have content, and there is sometimes some, um, some regu, regu, regulations that they deal with, 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 uh, different sports leagues. But if you communicate, if, if you're going to be taking video, if you communicate with NORCAN, they might let you borrow some of their better cameras, and they might actually post it on NOR, on NORCAN as well. They're looking for content, they're looking for that. And so I think one of the biggest challenges they often have is that they do not have people to actually, you know, take the time to go out and, and, and tape that. So if you are interested in being somebody that tapes, if you communicate with NORCAN, it might be something that they could put on their, uh, the ca, on the local cable station as well, and they might allow you to use a, you know, a nice camera in order to tape the film.
Okay. We, we also wanted to see about the students who are either in AV class or an AV club. If there are students that, um, who are probably pretty slick with an iPad and whatnot, um, that they would be, um, does, does anybody know, are there any teachers or clubs that are, um, uh, focused in that area?
I can speak to Mr. Lopret about that. Again, that's, that's a question we have sort of every year, and there's, there's not often that they're available in the same way. Um, there is a club. Sometimes it runs, sometimes it doesn't. I'm not sure of the status right now. But that is, every year, we want to try to get more students, uh, recording games and getting involved. I, in schools I worked in in the past, that was, uh, very much the norm, that students sort of did their broadcast, and we, we would love to see that. We've worked with NORCAN in the past on this, so it's something we're, we're building toward. Uh, what happens in North Reading, I, I, you know, part of what I see is that the students that are in the AV program are also in the theater program, they're also the athletes, they're all, they're doing three or four things, and there's not always a, a group of students that, that is available to cover, um, the games. But that's definitely a goal that we have, and we can certainly check in with Mr. Lopret on the updates there.
Okay. Um, and then just to also let you know, there's no shortage of parents who are willing and ready to help assign the students with spreadsheets and contact tracing, or before the games, with placing markers on bleachers, or paying for markers, or whatever, whatever you need. So, um, feel free to reach out. I know there's a representative from at least each of the fall sports on the phone with us tonight, um, and, um, we, um, you know, we're, we're ready to go.
No, that's fantastic. So again, I, I appreciate what you're sharing with the, the MIAA. That's something that we'll continue to discuss. Um, you know, I was asked today to consider, you know, that we, that we go with what's already in place while the Board of Health kind of considers, um, whether, whether we're going to be able to move to that level, or whether we need to stay where we are. But that's, that's an ongoing discussion, that we're still looking for more information. So, right now, we're still safe to go with the 50, and then we need to see whether we can move up to that next, that next level. But there will be a change, um, for, for Monday the 12th, so.
Right, that's a nice, um, and there are some games on Monday the 12th, because that's the two, literally, Monday the 12th.
Yes, that...
Open.
That's the, that's the plan. That would be day one of this, uh, scenario. Yep.
That's a nice, uh, holiday present, so thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? I see Mrs. LaVie, La, I can't say it. LaVerrier.
Verdiere, yeah.
Thank you. Um, okay.
So it sounds, it sounds like the only, the only thing I would comment on, Mrs. Rich, um, is, um, that piece about, uh, the communication with the eight, with the opposing school A.D. that feels like it's a game-by-game situation, not a blanket thing, right? That, 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 um, Mr. Johnson's going to be communicating with, uh, other A.D.s sort of on, on an ongoing basis, not that everyone's agreed that it's okay. Is that, is that how I'm reading that?
Yeah, I, I, I can check that. I'm not reading it that way. I'm reading it that the, the communication of who the people are that would kind of, um,
Oh, okay.
They would, they would be sort of above and beyond the, the parental form.
Okay.
Um, would, would be, he would communicate that there's going to be a videographer and a photographer. Here are the two names, and they get to come in, sort of like a press pass, as opposed to typical, that's how I'm understanding it, based on the, the conversation I had with him prior to this email, but I will, I will verify all of that, and we'll have all that in, in place. And we will certainly have, you know, a process for people to, uh, to let us know if they, if they're not coming or they're going to change. You know, there's no perfect system with the contact tracing, but we certainly feel that having that cap and having that limit and having those, um, you know, those pieces in place will certainly be better than just a free-for-all. So, um, so, but I appreciate the feedback on the form as well, so.
I have a question. Um, can you guys hear me?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Tremontosi.
This is Al Lutremontosi. So I just had a question, a point of clarification. Um, so the, the prohibition on spectators, um, just from my understanding, is that enacted to protect the players or the play, or, or the parents?
There's to protect the players. That's what the, the K-PAN League, when they came together to decide whether they were going to have a league, or whether they were going to play, whether they're going to participate, what it was going to look like, um, what was decided was that we would start sort of a two-week soft opening, students and, and players only. Um, and, and all of the K-PAN League, uh, districts agreed that that would be the start, because there were some districts that, as you look around the, the state, there are some schools that just aren't playing, or, uh, they, they postpone their season. Um, this league, based on our numbers, you know, like, like Mr. Buckley said, a lot of those schools are not open right now, and those schools aren't in session because they felt that, that they weren't ready to return, but they wanted to have athletics, but they wanted to do it just for the students first and get the students out there. And then after two weeks, we revisit, um, whether spectators would come. So there, there may be other, uh, districts in the, in the league that are not opening to spectators. That doesn't, I, I, I want to make sure that's clear too. Just because North Reading's doing this on the 12th, that doesn't mean that every single, uh, district is doing that. They're going to make their own decisions in their, in their, um, in their communities.
Right, I understand. I guess, I guess from the point of, you know, from the perspective of a parent, I, w- with a lot of these venues that we have, where, you know, you know, and one exception comes immediately to mind, Rockport, um, but most of the Cal teams, uh, have more modern stadiums, if you will, right? Tracks and bleachers, um, and there's a buffer there. So I'm just curious, no matter what the numbers were, why, you know, that would be considered, um, a risk to the players when there's such a physical distance between the, it's, it's, it's almost like two different venues, if you will, right? I, I don't want to have an argument, but I just, it's just some of the, some of the things that apparently don't seem to make a lot of sense, you know what I mean? It, it's, that's why the, the question, I pre- prefaced it, if you're protecting the players, there's, you know, where, where it's distant from the players as you can possibly be, basically. Um, you know what I mean? So, you know, hopefully, that's, that's taken into consideration when we meet, as opposed, when, when, you know, when there is that opportunity... As opposed, when, when, you know, when there is that opportunity on the twelfth or whatever that might be. To look at it, you know, more or less logically and say, how are these pay, how are these players impacted? Um, by people being a good twenty, thirty, forty, fifty yards away, right? Regardless of the numbers. Um, and so, thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Sure, and that's something that every, that every school district athletic director, principal, superintendent, local board of health. They have to make all those considerations along with the venues that they're in. So, um, logic's certainly a part of it, but there, there are many other factors that, that are unique to those communities. So we, you know, we, we can make the decisions here, we made a decision as a, as a league to look at this, you know, to, to, to come up with one decision for two weeks to make sure it, it happened and every, you know, um, we just wanted to make sure the kids got out there and played. We've had success with that and now we're going into the second phase, which is allowing spectators back. So again, we, we'll be able to move forward that North Reading, um, for now, you know? And, and again, if things, if things change here, if the numbers get to a certain place, the Board of Health weighs in, we might have to revisit that as well. But right now, things are in such a place that we feel safe to do this and we're going to move forward with it.
Yeah, and, and, and remember that, like, I'm, I'm, I'm on school committee boards as well. And there's a lot of districts around here that didn't open to begin and they're just starting to transition. So I, I suspect some of them wanted to get their kids back in school, you know, in the first couple of weeks before they started dealing with athletic issues.
Yep.
Um, a question came in about what, how, how do they figure, how do we figure out if you can go to another town? Is there going to be any communication about that for?
There, I imagine that's going to come out through the, um, through the coaches about, about what that looks like. And, you know, I think, my understanding is parents have been going to games. Um, it's just a matter of whether they're actually getting into the, you know, in, in, into the field or closer. They've been sitting in cars and watching or at a fence or whatnot. So obviously, I don't think anything's going the other direction that I've heard. Um, but as to what their process is, you know. I, I told Mr. Johnson to share out what we're doing because if, if they want to have something as simple as a Google form. I think that's a good idea for other districts to, to adopt and, and go with anyway, but they may have their own system. Um, and, and that will be, you know, shared out. So we're going to continue to talk to those schools and those districts. But like I said, a lot of those districts are dealing with many other things beyond, um, beyond sports right now. And, uh, and so we're not, we might not get answers everywhere, but as we get them, um, that, that will be communicated out, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other topics for school reopening?
I believe those, uh, those are the main, uh, pieces of school reopening that I wanted to. Cover tonight, I just want to make sure, I think the other piece I'm going to speak about during the academic calendar part.
My, my only question is, are, how, what percentage of people are doing the daily screening?
What percentage of people?
Is there, is there a lot of participation in it, I mean?
It's, it's very, very highly done. The only thing I'd say to remind, I'll just say, you know, I always say to do it the morning of, not the night before. We want to see those, those results. But we are getting, um, you know, you know, that, it's the most, uh, activity I've seen in a spreadsheet around here in a long time. We usually, we do a lot of surveys, but we've got twenty, twenty thousand, um, you know, pieces of data that I was just. Deleting tonight and moving over so that we can navigate it a little bit better. So people are doing a great job with that, it's a great heads up for us to, uh, to, to, to have conversations. Um, and our nurses are using that every day, so it's very, been very, very helpful. So thank you for, please continue doing it, it's very helpful to us, um, to, uh, to make the best decisions for our kids.
I apologize to Buckley, so I forgot a couple of times last week, but.
And that may happen, it, you know, it's, it's not a catch-all system. It's not a perfect system, but it's certainly given us a heads up on, uh, on conversations that we need to have to make sure everyone.
And, and has there been any uptick in the lunches? Uh, that's maybe a budget item, but Mr. Connolly?
Um, thank you, Mr. Buckley, so the, the lunches have increased over the last week or so, so, um. So those are definitely on a, on a moderate, um, increase right now and we'll just be certainly, um, monitoring that. And it's, you know, part of this will be included in my budget update a little bit later on the meeting. Um, but I think, I think the participation of, of in-school lunches are showing signs that they're on the rise. And we would love to, um, continue to increase the, the grab and go program for the remote learning days. Again, that's, it's available, it's there, it's, it's, it's a free breakfast and a lunch every day for all, all students. And, um, we would love to have families just try to take, take a part in that program as well.
Right, thank you. Sure. Okay, move on to new business, we have the academic calendar to discuss and a couple of changes here.
Sure, so just, just a couple of, um, of things that, that we wanted to discuss here. I, I had mentioned last time that we had moved the October ninth Professional Development Day off the schedule. Um, what we have decided, so one opportunity that, uh, we're going to be able to offer students is to, to. Allow them to take the S A T on October fourteenth. Right now, there are not a lot of opportunities for students to take the S A T, a lot of the traditional centers are closed. Um, there's a one-day opportunity for students to take the S A T at school, it has to be on the fourteenth. Since it's a Wednesday, that's already a release day for elementary. And our thought is to bring that, uh, Professional Development Day that we didn't have on the ninth and move it to the fourteenth. Um, that would be just for middle school and high school, but it's for everybody that day, okay? So we would be technically banking an elementary half day somewhere that we would make up, you know, for equity. But as far as, um, communication goes, it's just now everyone has a half day on that day. What that allows is the students to be spaced out in the cafeterias, the gymnasium, a lot of those large areas. Um, we have to subdivide the spaces, I believe it's like twenty-five or less in those areas to keep it. But it allows all of our interested seniors to take the exam. Um, we would be able to have the proctors and all of the, uh, the support that's needed for students for accommodations provided from our staff. And then the staff that are, um, here would, would have professional development. So in addition to that, I also removed, there was one redundant item on the schedule. We, we don't have a P M kindergarten this year, our half day is all in the morning. And so there was an A M, P M switch that's always in there that I just took that out because it was redundant. So I believe those are the, the updates to the calendar, um, that we would, that we, we just approved tonight.
So the, the, I, I, I would like to just start by saying, I, I've, I've seen a few things on Facebook about the limitations of finding spaces for S A T. So I applaud the district, um, making that change to allow that because I know that's something that a lot of parents are, are having a lot of concerns over. And I ask, and I know, I know a lot of people, I, I assume that's only for North Reading students. And, but I also want to just ask if there's any chance that we would do another one? Because I know some parents, I don't know if they get the results and then they can take it again, but that would be something that we. Again, if, if we're, if we're seeing a need for that, then I wonder if we should consider even a potentially a second day if there is another day in the future.
So I want to thank Mr. Lefret and Mr. Rosa, uh, who did an outstanding job researching this and really figuring out all of the fine details of it, um, and really coming to me advocating for why this would be great for kids. Um, the, there, there's also the P S A T, there's, you know, so there, there's other things on their mind for this, but it's, all of those are a little bit different. And, and my understanding is this is the only opportunity that we have right now. And if there is something later and there is a desire, I'm sure that they will advocate for it as well. Um, but right now this is the, the opportunity to do this this year.
This would be the last, this would generally be the, around the last time a senior would take it anyway, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, so, you know, and that's what, and I, I, if I didn't say it, I will say this, this is for seniors only. So this is, this is what we're doing here at this point, yep. So, um, yeah, so we would continue to think about that if need be, but, um, but I would say that. And just in general about the calendar, you know, we have those T B Ds in there. The reason we did those to be determined dates was, you know, while everything is going great right now. We're very optimistic that we're going to remain in, in our, in our hybrid in-person, um, model. We don't know what, what the future looks like. And similar to the spring, we weren't sure how to use April vacation, how to use half days. And we wanted to do that based on, uh, the situation we're in. So the feedback I have received from many parents is that they're happy, they do see a difference with what the hybrid and remote learning looks like this year. Um, and certainly, you know, I, I think, and even I, I met with our, in our, in our E A president. He notices a difference even with elementary, elementary's really, um, doing a lot of things going above and beyond. It's, it's just different with the younger kids. And we may need to build in some breaks at different times just to give them time to, to figure some things out and to, and to, um. You know, so as I said, banking a day here or there, maybe making use of that to give them some time to, to, uh, to do their planning. We are also, I, I forgot to mention earlier, um, I believe, um. That this is coming from one of the grants that just got approved. I, I know it's coming from the grant, I think the grant just got approved. Uh, but we're going to hire some additional remote learning assistants for the elementary schools. Some additional support staff because just having other adults there just to support the teachers when they're doing both live teaching and teaching at home, especially at that level, it's really important. So I, I think in general, just about the calendar, just to keep those things in mind, that there may be some things added as needed. Because we've never done this before, you know, our calendar's built on what we know and when breaks are needed and when things happen. Um, so we're going to, uh, possibly need to talk about some other, some other breaks. We're right now going for the fourteenth and then we do have a full day on, on November third, so. So I did put in for a vote just to approve those changes and, um.
Can I have a mo- can I have a motion to approve the revised academic calendar for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Janine and Rich, we'll do a roll call vote, Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I meant aye as well, passes four zero, thank you very much. And now the school committee calendar.
Sure, so this, this item, I, I'm not sure, um, whether there's going to be a change. It's, it's a slight update to some of the dates here. We were going to propose, uh, canceling our next meeting on October nineteenth. But, um, I do think that we should update this, keep that date, um, based on some. Uh, the need to discuss some of the ongoing changes that are going on in the school and with our, um, our community. We may move some of the items that are on November fifth to that, uh, meeting, so what we can discuss that move forward. So I, I originally was going to propose a cancellation of a meeting, but I'm, I'm actually going to say that we should probably just keep our calendar as is for the time being.
Okay, and the, the only question I had on this also was, we had a, a discussion, I believe, after the last meeting about, um, the location. But not having it at the schools.
Yep.
Is that still the plan? That we probably will not meet at, at the hood session, Little?
Correct, I think, I think we will update it to, you know, I didn't reflect that here, so I can do that for our next meeting. I think we would still have a hood school presentation, but the location would be virtual. So they would, uh, they would be broadcasting to us, um, but not, we would not be going to the schools this year.
So if we're not canceling the meeting, why don't we just pass over this item?
Yep.
And we'll move to the bachelor, principal search timeline?
Excellent, so thank you so much. So as everyone's aware, uh, Mr. Clean has been, um, appointed to the position of assistant superintendent. He's scheduled to begin on December first. Um, after a lot of consideration, my recommendation, um, is that I will begin with a, a detailed process of having focus groups with the staff and the students at the bachelor school. But with the recommendation that we have an interim position from December first through June thirtieth. And we would post that position. Um, I would be equally open to having a, an internal candidate. I'm aware of some very talented, uh, internal candidates that would be vying for this position. I think it would be a good idea for, to give those folks a chance to interview and, and to meet with some of the folks at the school who would be part of an interview committee. Um, but I would also, depending on the scenario and the situation, whether we're in full in-person, hybrid, remote. All those different things could be possible as we get to December. I would entertain a retired principal who may want to come in for, for some time. Um, I would also entertain, um, some other creative solutions with, with Mr. Clean and, and the assistant superintendent position. All depending on where we are, but if, if everything was like it is today, I would want to have a, a, certainly, uh, an interim principal in that position. Um, that allows us though, because as I mentioned earlier, there are schools right now that don't have, they're not in school, they're in virtual. I think for us to conduct site visits and to do all those things right now is, is not the best timing. And it's difficult, similar to what I spoke about this time last year about replacing myself. The best pool of candidates you're going to find ready to move and transition on July one as opposed to on December first. So, um, you know, I, I do think we've got some great internal folks, but I think, you know, this is, this is an important, uh, position. It's our first principal search, I believe, since, I want to say two thousand and twelve. Um, or, or may, maybe a little bit later when, when Mrs., um, O'Connell came on, I think she was our last principal we brought in. So I think it's, it's very.
Oh, Mr. Lefret.
Yeah, Lefret.
Mr. Lefret, I think, I think Mr. Lefret. Yeah, okay, you're right.
That was in fourteen fifteen, I forget exactly.
Yep, no, you're right, you're right, but he was hearing, but you're right, but it wasn't.
But yeah, there was a search, yeah.
Exactly, so, but either way, it's been, it's been about six years then, um, since that's happened, so. Um, so the point is that, you know, and I, I do want to make it clear that with any of the interim folks who apply, sometimes you are not allowed to then go for the full. I would say this absolutely, if the person does well, they would be able to apply and would re-interview. It would not just be a, an appointment, it would be a, we would still go through the process in the spring. For the committee, I'm proposing that, you know, I certainly would be a part of this, uh, to, to name the principal. Um, a central office team member, so that could be, uh, Michael or Cynthia. Um, Sean, Colleen obviously will be involved as well as the current principal. We would have another principal, um, the president of the C P A C, a parent, at least two teachers, the school nurse or psychologist as well. Someone from the, uh, the staff at the, the bachelor school, a paraprofessional from the bachelor school. Uh, the administrative assistant, obviously, who works very closely with the principal. And I, I would say a school committee member, we've had school committee members in the past on the search committee, so. Um, and that group would meet, um, both for the interim piece, um.
And it would be the same group for the other.
And then it would be the same group in the spring, right? And then we'd see, you know, it, it certainly, it, it will be a definitely a, a, a very involved process for the full search. We'll see what we get for candidates with the, with the internals and, and, and what that looks like. But I think that, uh, would be the process here. And I wanted to outline that now so that we could think ahead to, to get these posted in the next few weeks and get a, a pool of candidates for, for that December first transition.
So if, if, if I may, I think there's three different topics here. One is the interim, making sure that we're all in favor of that. The second is the timeline and the third would be the appointment from the school committee. I would, I was thinking we would have to try to appoint somebody tonight if we were going to have a meeting on October nineteenth. But if we are, I would suggest that we delay that because Diana Botwell is a parent at the bachelor. So I was gonna, I would at least want her to be part of the discussion because if she wants to throw her hat into that ring.
Yep.
So I would propose that we don't appoint the school committee member to that committee tonight.
Sure.
Um, but, so before we talk about the timeline, I just want to make sure, does the committee, is the committee all in favor of Dr. Daly's proposal to do an interim for the rest of this year? And then later try to hire for the next school year? Mrs. Inbriano?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McGowan?
Yes, and also I'm, you know, perfectly happy if, if the decision is to just, just look at internal, uh, candidates. I don't have a problem with that as well.
Mr. Facilio?
I agree, sounds like a good player.
And I do too, so I think that's, that's fine there. And then questions on the timeline, the one, one thing that I was going to suggest here was, well. Two things on the committee, number one, for the parent, I would clarify, I think it should be a batch parent.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure, because it just didn't list it there, and so I think that should for sure be a batch parent.
Yep.
And would the chair of the committee be you or somebody different?
It would be.
Would be you, okay. And I guess my only other question would be, are we going to look for possibly hiring a recruiting firm to get different applicants? Or are we not going to, or are we just going to post ourselves and just see what we, what we get?
So we would, you know, I'm going to speak with the, with the, um.
Committee?
The, the parents and the staff at the school to see and to see what, um, what would be needed. I think there are definitely different avenues that we can explore to, to post. I mean, we could definitely go beyond just the school spring typical, um, posting that we do. Um, I, I don't, typically, we don't go with the firms and spend, you know, a lot of money. But I think maybe, um, getting the, the word out in a lot of different areas and across the state, I think might be a, a good idea as well.
Okay, do other people have questions or thoughts on the timeline or the process? Mr. McGowan?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Janine?
No, I'm off that.
Chris?
Uh, no problem.
Okay, so do you, you just, you just had a discussion on this, do you want to vote on the timeline or not?
I don't know that you need to.
No, we don't need to vote.
Okay, yeah, this is just, you know, technically, this is, uh, my, my hire as superintendent. I'm just sharing the process with you, so it's not.
Just confirm.
Quite as much of, uh, approval as some of the other hires, but, um, I just wanted to make sure everyone was on board.
Yep, I think I, I think we all agree with that, then.
Excellent.
Okay, moving on to school committee goals. Did we not vote this before or not?
No, you actually never sent it out.
Yeah, this, this is the first time we've sort of officially kind of looked at it all. So at this time, what we're hoping to do is to look through all of our goals for the year. Um, I just want to talk through some of the, the, the updates and changes that we've made. And then. And there may be some revisions. This this is sort of a draft, but if we are comfortable, we could, we could go through that through. So. Um so part of what we discussed during our our workshop uh early this summer was to. Uh to streamline and to try to focus a lot of our goals. Um overall, it's gone down to it's a two-page document as opposed to a four-page document. Uh but I think that all of the goals and objectives and actions are um, they're very, they're very active, right? They're not passive statements. They are, they all are, you know, from what I can see, they're fairly measurable. And so I'll just share the the document that we that we drew together. We took the goal statements and the objectives and combined those um into into different areas. One thing that that. Changed through the process, we changed the word activities to actions, uh just thinking that that was a little bit more of a of a of an active uh step. And so it's still, the goals are arranged under leadership and governance, final financial and asset management, educational program and family and community relations. So I don't know whether, did you want to look at them in any detail or did you just want to point out any comments or questions that we have?
I don't have any specific need to do that. I don't know if anybody else does. I mean, the public might think we're going from four pages to two, so we're doing less, and they're correct. We're gonna be doing a lot less this year. Kidding, hopefully. Um Mrs. Inbriano, did you see anything and anything that was contrary to what we talked about at our workshop?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't. Um I would have to put them down if I, again, and I had not done that, but um. I'm assuming that this is what was on the screen.
Yeah.
Type thing, so you didn't, you know, put anything else in there. So I I don't have any, I I was in agreement with. What transpired when we were going through it to begin with, so.
No. Mr. McGowan, did you see anything?
No, these look uh, these look good to me.
And uh Mr. Papavasilio?
No, looks good.
Hi. Me too. I don't think we have to go through it all. I mean, we had a couple of meetings on it, so. So can we, can I have a motion to approve the North Orange School Committee goals for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. There's no discussion. Uh Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, passes four zero. Thank you, everyone.
I think these are are solid goals, and I think we will share these out. Our plan is to. Work with our NRPS twenty twenty five goals, school improvement goals, administrator goals and teacher goals, and all have some alignment. I think there's some great. Places here for our teachers to to build on some of these goals as well. And so that'll be, that'll be great for that up, kind of vertical alignment there. So that's great.
That's great.
Moving on to the minutes, Mrs. Inbriano, we'll just uh.
I vote to the others. I make a motion to accept the open session minutes of September twenty fourth as written.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Anybody notice anything off?
Aye. I'm fine.
Okay. Uh roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, four zero. Thank you very much. Budget update, Mr. Connolly? Great.
Yeah, I'm right, I'm right here. Sorry, sorry, just trying to, trying to find the mute, unmute button. Um so, yeah, so our first budget update for fiscal twenty one essentially reflects activity through the first quarter of the fiscal year. Um through the through the month of September. Um. I I believe it all, as we as we know, it certainly, everything's a little bit more involved and a little more more complicated because we're. Dealing with a lot of unforeseen costs and several expenses that um arose during the summer months to address. Supply and equipment needs related to the reopening of schools and with the with the pandemic and the COVID nineteen virus. Uh we had certainly had to ensure that we had the proper. Equipment. Um and many of these expenses, certainly the protective personal equipment, cleaning and sanitation supplies, um. Computer devices, the various HVAC upgrades that occurred at all five schools. Um we we anticipate that we are in the process of um transferring. Just about all of these expenses to federal grants that we have received, including a reopening grant and the technologies essentials grant. And another CARES Act grant that we uh were able to receive and and secure um during the sort of the late summer months at the and into the beginning of September. Uh there's certainly additional supplies and e- equipment and 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 classroom materials, in some cases. Um educational software that are all related to the the reopening of schools and and certainly can be related to the COVID nineteen virus that. We have charged to the general fund. Uh these are reflected on the bottom of the report, so you can certainly identify. Um what some of these expenses are. We are continuing to work pretty closely with the town finance office. Um to pursue the reimbursement of these expenses from the CARES Act funding that has been made available to all municipalities. Um beginning at the emergency school closure, which began last March. And um we'll continue, at least right now, through the month of December. Uh although we anticipate, uh we are hopeful, although nothing has been released yet, that 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 deadline could be extended um. You know, much further than December of of twenty twenty. Um so certainly in this report. Uh we also included an additional summary of the available funding and the in the grants that are specifically for the school department that are related to the COVID nineteen virus. Um not all of these expenses yet that we have identified in these federal grants have been transferred. From the general fund to these available grant sources, which I think is the reason, if you're seeing deficits in certain areas, which I can, I'll address in a moment. Um it's certainly related to the fact that we are, uh we're waiting for the these grants to be officially approved and then we would. Uh officially move move some of the funding over to the federal grants. Um but in some of the more typical process that we go through in the summer, the supply is necessary to start the school year. And each school certainly has been ordered in process. Uh we've encumbered all utility expenses and we're certainly monitoring utilities and and so forth as we as we move through. Through the first quarter of the year, we continue to do that. Um you know, the revolving account balances, I think there's if there's any area of of uncertainty or the big largest area of uncertainty. Certainly around the some of our revolving accounts, those those funding. Uh accounts that we take in either a user fee or or tuition um to help offset certain expenses. Certainly the athletic revolving fund, food service revolving fund, transportation, and then the tuition-based programs for the kindergarten pre-K accounts. Um you know, there there's a level of uncertainty there. I don't think there's any area of immediate concern, um but there's certainly going to be a a need to closely monitor. Um these accounts, given some of the, certainly the revenue. Um and these accounts based on participation in some areas are is is down from what we expected when we budgeted last last December. But. I will say, I think we were, we anticipated a lot of this and we were able to do some things at the end of fiscal year twenty, when we closed out the fiscal year to. Kind of hedge the fact that we we knew there was uncertainty in these revolving accounts and that they were. Participation or revenue and so and so forth um was in some ways unknown or uncertain. So I think we did set ourselves up pretty well with a very strong closeout of fiscal year twenty. Um to kind of hedge any 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 level of risk there to to put ourselves in an ability to to deal with some of that uncertainty. But it certainly is an area of. That we've spoken of in the past and that we'll have to certainly watch. Um but we continue to pursue all areas of of federal funding and grants that could be available due to the COVID nineteen virus. Um. We did apply for a a food service emergency feeding grant. Uh that was one grant we have not been notified yet or have not received. Um we'll continue to try to. Um get updates on that. Um but the the other grants that are identified on the supplemental report. Um have been officially secured at this point. And I'll speak to some of those in a moment. But on the on the payroll side, you know, just is a typical business in the summer and and, you know, we were certainly busy filling. Staff vacancies. Uh we we certainly had a need to hire some long-term substitutes to fill some extended leave of absences this school year. Um we don't anticipate any of any of these, this will have a significant impact on the substitute budget. Um we did hire building substitutes at each building. Um at this time, as we spoke to, and and some of that cost was certainly part of our our federal grants that we um. Uh expenses that we identified in some of these federal grants, given that cost, it was a a new cost this year. Um we've had the need to hire some additional instructional, you know, learning aids to assist in each building, um especially in the kindergarten program. Um we've had, we've hired some additional staffing, including a some additional custodial staff to help you meet the needs across all five schools and campuses. To address the touchpoint cleaning and disinfecting and sanitation as as that is occurring. Uh we've we've hired a additional technician to help um, given the the influx of new devices, the need for technology assistance. So we we've done that. And we, I think as everyone's aware, we've hired a district-wide floating nurse. So all of those kind of new positions certainly can all be related to the COVID nineteen virus. And all these positions are part of federal grants that we've identified that um and are included on the report that is in your packet. Um and some of these payroll staffing expenses, I will say, still need to be transferred over to the grants. Um and we expect to do that shortly, um which would take care of some of the the deficits that you may see on the on the attached report. Uh these include the cost for some building substitutes, in some cases, some of the instructional aids and certainly the the custodial staff. Um and I think that's, you'll kind of see that when you look at the report. Um but we do anticipate making these accounting adjustments in the very near future. Um. But I would say most of the payroll projections at this time, you know, certainly are very close to within budget ranges. You may be noticing a. Maybe a larger balance in the administration line. That's just due to the delay of the employment of the assistant superintendent. So we did know that 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 was happening and there was going to be some. Available funds there. Uh but as we enter the start of the second quarter of the fiscal year in October, I I do believe we are in some, you know, solid financial standing. Um despite everything that's been going on um with the with the budget in this, in 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 COVID nineteen and in some of the new expenses. But we will continue to pursue all available grant funding. And I think right now. Uh certainly leveraging the federal grant funding that we have received to the greatest extent possible. Um so if you look at, certainly the report is is shown in two pages, broken down by expenses. And payroll on on page one of the financial report after the narrative. Um you can see that I've identified at the bottom some COVID nineteen expenses that have been charged to the general fund um and. Have yet to be sort of, you know, transferred out at this point or journalized out to the the CARES Act funding, which is available to both the town. Um and the school department. So I do anticipate that. The majority, if not all of these expenses that were essentially occurred during the first quarter of the year. Um some of them are educational materials and supplies and software that was needed, classroom materials that was was needed. Um technology, certainly technology, software, um hotspots, some cases, devices. Um some cases, you know, you know, variety of technology-type equipment for instructional equipment for the classroom. Um what were purchased. And then on the facility standpoint, we had several um. Cleaning supplies, disinfectants, sanitation, PPE, et cetera. Um you can see the the expenses that we did have incurred and. I'm in the process of working with um town finance director to to identify these avail eligible expenses to be generalized over to. The the CARES Act funding so that the town will receive reimbursement for these. But they're certainly all all eligible for that that area of funding. Uh if you look on page two of the report, payroll. Um I think there's a lot of surprises here. I think that. Um you know, we certainly, most of payroll is sort of trending in 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 areas that we budgeted, in the areas that you're seeing deficits. As I spoke to earlier, in in the substitute line item, we're we're in the process of transferring some of those expenses and um. Projections over to the the um the federal grant that's federal grants reopening grant that we've received and identified these expenses to be charged to. So that's certainly the the case in the substitute line item. It's the case in the custodial line item. As we're in the process of doing that, which would certainly take care of, take take care of some of the the reflected deficits on the on the payroll side of the report. Um if you look at the page three of the financial report. Um I just wanted to make it clear what's our sum of the school department COVID nineteen sources of funding. Uh we received three main federal grants, um the school that are school department-related. We have the school reopening grant, which is an amount, it was a fixed amount pure uh pupil that we received. Right now, these, the deadline for this grant is expenses through December thirty one, twenty twenty. And essentially what was identified um as as how we're how we're kind of utilizing the this grant is through. Um certainly technology and and additional computer devices, in some cases, remote remote learning tools and software and 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 hotspots for families in need. For internet access and so forth um is is part part of this grant. Certainly, there's some cleaning and sanitation supplies that we've had to um incur that is written into this grant. Um all the major HVAC upgrades and equipment that were done at all of the um. Five schools and four campuses have been written into this grant. Um so those are the majority of the expenses. And on the staffing side, as I spoke to earlier in my narrative, the the technician, some of the instructional learning aids. Uh building-level substitutes and some of the additional custodial staff are all part of the reopening grant, certainly all related to. Needs related to COVID nineteen and to successfully reopen and safely um, you know, reopen the the schools in September. Um and that isn't, you can see the amount there, a little over five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um the other grant, uh fund code one thirteen is the elementary and secondary education emergency relief grant, otherwise known as the E S S E R grant. And again, a federal source where we have until the end of June to expend funds. And this was utilized for an additional school nurse. Um and that's a little more than fifty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollar grant. Um the third grant that we've received is a remote learning technologies essentials grant. Again, we have until the end of June to expend this grant. It's a little more than a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and that was entirely for. Remote learning devices, Chromebooks, and then again, in some cases, hotspots, internet Wi-Fi access is how the district is utilizing this this grant. Uh the last source of funding. Um was the municipal through the municipal CARES Act FEMA funding process is a source of funding that began back in March. A little more than one point three million dollars. And this is. The area that we're working very closely with town officials, um certainly Elizabeth Rourke, town finance director, and Michael Gilbert, our administrator. Um to identify eligible expenses. And um submit those on an ongoing basis for reimbursement. And then reimbursement has already started to flow back to the town. Um for this area of funding. And um you see there in the note, um the school department did submit for reimbursement of up to a little over a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of. Expense, eligible expenses related to PPE. And cleaning sanitation equipment as well as technology needs that arose last spring and into the through May and June. Um that have already, we've already received reimbursement for, and that was last fiscal year. And then we've already submitted two requests. Um for ongoing expenses, sort of doing this on every kind of three-week cycle. Um that we're in the process of waiting to 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 receive reimbursement and generalize these expenses from one fund to the other. But. I'm very hopeful that 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 these expenses are certainly clearly eligible and this process will occur very shortly. So certainly, whereas, you know, there's some extra layers of of um accounting and and that is going on right now. Um as we address the 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 COVID nineteen uh situation and the other the other available federal sources of funding. Um but I, you know, I I I do believe that. Um we have worked very hard to kind of creatively and strategically um about how we can utilize this funding and and do so. Um to to leverage the our needs um to meet the requirements of the grants and the deadlines of the grants. And certainly the the focus around safe reopening and and um technology, which is certainly key as we know. And and certainly s- s- staff devoted to to the health with the the school nurse and safety of the students. Um as well as cleaning and sanitation and and HVAC upgrades, as well as additional custodial staff and touch. as well as additional custodial staff and touch point private cleaning company and so forth, which we've, we've incurred to ensure a, um, the, the safety of all students and staff working in the buildings. Um, as well as the, the learn, instructional learning aids and so forth that we're continuing to explore and, and, and written into the grants and the building substitutes to help, help, um, you know, ensure the, the staff has the support that they need and, and and the families learning remotely have, have the support that they need as well. So that's essentially the, um, kind of my opening, my comments. I'll, I'll turn it over to any, any questions.
Thank you, Michael. I think I'll just say that, uh, we are very fortunate to have you. I think, um, you know, it, it's, a lot of districts are struggling right now with funding and I think we take you for granted that we know that you're going to get every grant that's out there and, you know, anticipate, you know, revenue issues. And so I have a lot of confidence in the budget that you, the updates you provide us and I appreciate all of that work. I don't have any specific questions. I don't know if anybody in the committee does.
No. Thank you for all your hard work, Mike.
Yes, thank you so much, Michael.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, uh, specific questions, but I'll just reiterate. And first of all, Michael, thank you very much for, uh, outlining these grants. Uh, you know, I think, you know, something I had asked about, um, and, um, I, I really appreciate it. And one of, one of the things that struck me as you were going through all this is that this document is a real sign of how much extra work, uh, has been done in the schools since March. So, um, um, it's a real testament to that as well. Um, and I know the, um, I know the, um, the grants, the grant process is an, is an extra layer of work as well. I assume when you mean cost being transferred over, you're talking on, on an account, on the accounting side. Is that what you're, is that mostly what you're talking about?
Yes, correct. Making that accounting adjustment from the general fund to the fund that the town's identified for the CARES Act.
Okay. That's what I assume, but thanks.
Michael, the only thing outside of the budget here I would ask about is, is the LED project complete now? And are we going to be talking about the solar, uh, the solar at some point in time? Do we need to start moving forward with that?
Yeah, it's certainly two good questions. So the LED lighting, um, it's essentially complete at force, for, um, the, the middle school, high school, the bachelor school and the little school. It's, it's complete. Does it, we're just kind of going through some small punch list items just to make sure. Um, there's a couple of small areas with, that need to be addressed in the middle school and the high school. I think there's one little area at the batch. But they, they started, um, today at the hood and that's the last school and we're hoping to accelerate that and, um, potentially by Friday of this week be completed at the hood school. And then it would be completed at that point in time. With the solar, so we are certainly, um, continuing to explore solar, um, and kind of revisit that and pick up where things left off last spring. We are working with, uh, at the moment with RMLD who submitted a, a request for information that was due at, you know, at the end of August. So I'm waiting to get some information. I actually reached out to, I'm sorry, at the, at the beginning of September or mid-September, I believe, was the, the due date was extended to the mid-September to see, uh, what were some of the responses of the interested, uh, firms and develop, and solar developers that took part in that process. The idea is that if, if we have some, uh, projects that look like they make sense for both the town and the schools, we, we increase the, the eligible rail estate, um, for solar, because we, we kind of realize that we, you know, if we want the, the revenue to be as advantageous as we can, we, we need to look at certainly all areas in the community. So the next step is to kind of analyze tho, those results. And then if, if things seem like it, it makes sense and there's a project there that's beneficial, we would submit an official, um, another official RFP at that point. And at that point, it might involve more than just the middle school and the high school. It might involve, um, other areas of, of school buildings as well as town. And we would, and we're trying to work a little bit more, more hand in hand with RMLD, given that they're the third party that has to be involved, given it's a closed franchise, um, to make all these contracts work. So that's kind of the approach we're, we're taking now. Um, I've not heard back from RMLD in my inquiry about a week ago, so I need to kind of continue to follow up with them to find out what some of that data showed in the RFI that they submitted. That we, that we agreed to take part in, um, with Michael Gilberto's assistance. We were, we were both on calls with RMLD back, back in August about it.
So, thank you very much.
Just wanted to add one thing again. Thank you to Michael for this and for the, everyone in the town and the finance planning team for helping us with this. The physicians that we were able to get through the grants, I think it's important just to point out, these are physicians that have been in our budget for many years. The additional custodian, the additional nurse. Um, I'm not sure what the situation's going to be in terms of grants for after December 31st or into next year. But, you know, I, I just think it's important to say it's going to be a difficult budget year, but a lot of these physicians are ones that we hope we can sustain because they, they've always been necessities. They've always been, they've just been non-negotiables this year in COVID. But these aren't necessarily items that just came up because of COVID. These are things that have been out there for many years. So it's just important for everyone to, to recognize that. And we hope that we can find a way to support, uh, some of these great physicians that are, that are making our schools better. You know, having a technician now for devices K to 12, having an extra custodian for all of the things that need to be done inside and outside of the school. And for that, for the numbers that we have, for having that additional nurse and the floating nurse, it, it's especially important this year, but I think certainly in general, with the numbers we have, it's been justified for quite some time. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear as well.
Thank you. Okay. On to bids and donations. Mr. McGowan, would you like to lead us in this?
Yes, uh, we have one. I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a mini grant. They shouldn't sell themselves short, but a mini grant totaling $500 from Salem State University to be used for STEM Week preparation at North Reading Public Schools.
We have a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an, uh, sorry, Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Five, uh, four zero. Losing it here. Is that the only bid and donation we have tonight, I think?
That is it.
Okay. And we'll move on to subcommittee updates. Um, for that, I will just say that for finance planning team, I think Mr. McGowan can correct if I'm wrong, but it was primarily about town side stuff, um, particularly the Warren article, um, for town meeting and that. About it. I don't think there's anything notable for the school side.
Correct.
Subcommittee schedule. We have an athletics subcommittee meeting on October 16th at 12:30 PM virtually.
Actually, I'm sorry. That should be the 14th. Both of those are the 14th, I believe.
The 14th I meant, at 12:30 PM virtually. And fine arts subcommittee right after that at 3:30 PM virtually. Administrative report, anything else to daily?
None at this time. I think I covered it all earlier.
And any correspondence?
None at this time.
So our next meeting is going to be October 19th.
Yes.
And we'll do the same thing. We'll do a hybrid at 6:30 PM and then we have a meeting that, on November 5th and November 19th afterwards.
Correct.
And if there's any, no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. And we'll do a roll call vote for that. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everybody. Passes four zero. Good night, everyone, and go Patriots. And don't tell me, don't tell me the score. Don't tell me the score, anybody. Bye, y'all.